Hello, my name is Natasha Phillip and I am an attorney with the New York State Department of State. My goal today is to provide you with training and information on ethics through use of this presentation entitled, "Exploring Standards of Ethical Conduct for Members of Planning Boards and Zoning Boards of Appeals", Article 18 of the General Municipal Law and the Common Law.
As you may know, effective January 1st, 2007, all members of planning boards and zoning boards of appeals and members of county planning boards are required to receive four hours of training each year. Under this training mandate, your municipal governing board may waive or modify this training requirement, but only if it is deemed to be in the best interest of your municipality to do so. Also, your municipal governing board may determine what are the acceptable forms of training. Trainings conducted by the New York State Department of State may be an acceptable form of training. Again, today's training will focus on ethics. It is important at this point to state that the vast majority of public officers are good and honest, and they do their utmost to not act to benefit themselves in municipal contracts. Yet many, if not all of you who may view this presentation today, may have been faced with an ethical dilemma while in public service. Questions that may have arisen are: Can a Realtor serve on a planning board? When is disclosure of conflicts enough? Or when is recusal more appropriate? To answer these and many more questions, we will today develop a general definition of ethics and identify those primary sources of law where guidance may be found. Two of these primary sources will be the focus of this presentation. The first being Article 18 of the General Municipal Law, which is the Conflicts of Interest Law for municipal officers and employees of the state of New York. It focuses on prohibited contracts and enumerated exceptions. I will attempt to highlight some potential conflicts of interest that you or a fellow board member may be faced with. I will also provide you with disclosure requirements and discuss the significance of local codes of ethics and local boards of ethics. I will discuss the common law, another primary source for guidance when dealing with matters primarily in those instances where no municipal contracts are involved. I will give a brief run-through of what are the results of interested contracts and finally conclude with setting forth a municipal checklist for you to consider in resolving a potential ethical dilemma. There is not one standard definition for ethics. What you might discover is actions taken by individuals may be evaluated within a framework. Here lists three main subsets of what that framework might include. First, conduct and behavior. Was there bad faith? For example, was there undue delay in reaching a decision on a site plan review application before your planning board, before your zoning board of appeals? Undue delay is bad faith. Ex parte communication, which is communication with a reviewing board outside the presence of all parties to an application. This may be considered unethical under your code of ethics. The next subset, morals or values. Your community standards may be reflected in your local law on ethics, so long as it does not abridge Article 18 of the General Municipal Law. Which leads me finally to conflicts of interest. Article 18 of the General Municipal Law prohibits interested contracts unless other provisions like its exceptions apply. Financial and contractual arrangements may give rise to ethical conflict, yet familiar relationships may not. We'll explore these and more provisions of Article 18 as we go forward in future slides. No matter how you define ethics, Article 18 permits municipalities to reflect their norms, morals, values, permit or ban certain conduct or behavior through adoption of local codes of ethics. Again, more information on local codes of ethics will be provided in future slides. Even with this definition, the definition that we have just set forth in the previous slide, you will still need guidance, places where the standards of ethical conduct are set. The first place to look for guidance is Article 18 of the General Municipal Law, which again is the Conflicts of Interest Law governing municipal officers and employees of the state of New York. Guidance may also be found in other state statutes like Penal Law Section 195, which states, "A public servant is guilty of official misconduct when, with the intent to obtain a benefit or deprive another person of a benefit, he or she one commits an act relating to his office but constituting an unauthorized exercise of his official duties, knowing that such act is unauthorized. Or two, he or she knowingly refrains from performing a duty which is imposed on him or her by law or is clearly inherent in the nature of his or her office." Official misconduct is a Class A misdemeanor. Another place where relevant information may be found is case law. Courts have stated that public servants are held to something stricter than the morals of the marketplace. Not honesty alone, but honor, the most sensitive of which should be the standard of behavior for all public servants. Finally, opinions of the state comptroller and the state Attorney General may guide you when trying to determine whether or not a particular act is ethical. While these opinions are not binding on a court of law, they are persuasive. That is why this presentation uses many of these opinions for illustration when the facts are relevant. Let us begin to discuss Article 18 of the General Municipal Law. In 1964, the state legislature enacted Article 18 of the General Municipal Law to protect the public from municipal contracts influenced by avaricious officers and to protect innocent public officers from unwarranted assaults on their integrity. Article 18 was also enacted to mandate that each community adopt an appropriate code of ethics to supplement Article 18. As the historical notes of Article 18 states, "If government is to attract and hold competent administrators, public service must not require a complete divesting of all proprietary interest. Real conflict must be rooted out without condemning the inconsequential." Again, Article 18 of the General Municipal Law focuses on prohibited contracts. Specifically, it regulates conflicts of interest by prohibiting municipal officers and employees from having an interest in contract with the municipality over which they have control. The underlying words are the three elements that must be present in order for an agreement or contract to be within the regulatory reach of Article 18. As to whether that agreement or contract is in violation of Article 18, we must further look to the other provisions of Article 18 like its exceptions as well as other sources of law. A case-by-case examination of the relevant facts and circumstances is necessary when evaluating whether a conflict of interest exists in a particular situation. Keep this in mind as we go forward and discuss how to identify a potential conflict of interest under the General Municipal Law Article 18. The first step in evaluating whether Article 18 may control is to determine whether the agreement being questioned is an applicable contract with the municipality. A contract as defined under Section 802 is any claim, account, or demand against or agreement with a municipality expressed or implied. It's a very broad definition, but for further explanation, a well-known individual whose study and report was instrumental for the revision and consolidation of the various statutes respecting conflicts of interest and municipal officials stated that a contract contemplates an agreement between a municipality and a third party where a consideration passes from the municipal corporation like a town, village, city, as a result of goods purchased by it or services rendered to it. This is important to keep in mind as we evaluate what constitutes a contract. Thus, a lawsuit against a municipality is considered a contract, while an application for a permit is less clear. Case law conflicts as to whether an application for a permit is considered a contract. Two cases that have addressed this issue is People v. Pinto and Fright Harbor v. the Town Board of the Town of Sheldon, which I would discuss. In People v. Pinto, the court stated that an application for a building permit and the subsequent issuance thereof is a contract between the applicant and the municipality by the terms of which, in consideration of the payment of a fee, an agreement on the part of the applicant to build in accordance with the plans he has filed, which have been approved and in accordance with the building code and the zoning ordinance of the municipality, the municipality confers upon the applicant a valuable property right. So a permit is issued, an applicant agrees to build in accordance with the plan submitted to the municipality that is consistent with the code of the municipality, and the municipality thereby confers a property right on that individual, thus constituting a contract under the reasoning of People v. Pinto. On the other hand, in Fright Harbor, the court found that a variance grant is not a contract that falls within the reach of Article 18 and further refused to adopt the reasoning in People v. Pinto to incorporate the issuance of permits within the definition of contracts without legislative guidance. In essence, rejecting the holding that a permit is a contract for Article 18 purposes. The Fright Harbor decision mentioned in the previous slide upheld several New York Attorney General and several New York State comptroller opinions that a zoning variance is not a contract. It also called into question whether an application for a permit is a contract under Article 18. Other New York State comptroller opinions have held that an application to a planning board is not a contract, as well as an application for a subdivision approval is not a contract. And as you might know, many municipalities have empowered planning boards to review subdivisions. In addition, an intermunicipal agreement, according to a New York State comptroller opinion, is not a contract. The New York Court of Appeals may likely conclude that the foregoing applications and agreement are not contracts consistent with the comptroller's interpretation. Because in a case dealing with whether a collective bargaining agreement is a contract, the Court of Appeals held that a collective bargaining agreement were not and to give a different interpretation would amount to Article 18 being nothing more than an instrument of harassment without purpose, a result surely not intended by the legislature. What does this mean for planning boards and zoning boards of appeal members? Various opinions interpret the definition of contract in Article 18, Section 800, Subsection 2, to exclude variances and applications to a planning board. That means common applications that come before a zoning board of appeals and common applications that come before a planning board are okay. They are not prohibited contracts under Article 18. Note however, that other provisions of Article 18 and the common law may apply. We will discuss those in future slides. Let's recap. Remember, Article 18 regulates conflicts of interest by prohibiting municipal officers and employees from having an interest in any contract with the municipality over which they have control. If there is no contract, then no prohibited interest exists for Article 18 purposes. However, other provisions of Article 18 may apply. We will discuss those provisions in future slides. For other municipal officers like town board members and employees, if a contract exists, the next question to answer is, does an interest present itself? An interest is defined as a pecuniary or material benefit, direct or indirect, accruing to an officer or employee of a municipality. If you are an officer or employee of a municipality, you will be deemed to have an interest in a contract that is between your municipality and certain other individuals and entities. For example, certain family members like your spouse, minor child, or minor dependents. This does not however include employment contracts between your municipality and your spouse, minor child, or minor dependents. You will be deemed to have a contract if it's between other employees or associations that you're related to, a corporation of which you are a director or employee, or a corporation so long as you own more than 5% of the outstanding stock, whether or not you are a director or employee. Just to recap the interest exceptions. Employment contracts between family members are not prohibited contracts under Article 18. But again, other contracts that are between your spouse, minor children, or dependents may be prohibited. Contracts between your municipality and your adult children are not prohibited under Article 18. The reasoning is that you and your adult child are separate people, whereas minor children and dependents are considered as independent in contracts outside of employment contracts with your municipality. These contracts will be as if made between you and your municipality. Again, contracts between your municipality and a corporation of which you are neither a director, an employee, nor an owner of less than 5% of the outstanding stock are not prohibited under Article 18. Finally, if you have a contract and that contract is with your municipality and you have an interest in that contract, then you are conflicted under Article 18 if you have control over that contract. Before we get into the rest of this slide, let me just remind you that this does not apply to planning board members and zoning boards of appeal members since most applications that come before them are not prohibited contracts under applicable provisions of Article 18. However, other provisions of Article 18 will apply to those applications, like disclosure provisions, which we will discuss in future slides. Do you have control over the contract? You have control over a contract if you have the power or duty to negotiate, prepare, authorize, or approve the contract, or authorize or approve payment under the contract, or audit bills or claims under the contract, or appoint an officer or employee who has any of the powers or duties set forth above. This is pursuant to General Municipal Law Section 801. What you might find helpful is that the New York City Conflicts of Interest Board has established a method for determining whether a prohibited interest exists. The interactive program is located at the link on your slide presentation. An example of having control over the contract can be gleaned from a Supreme Court case where a town board member acquired property at a county tax sale. At trial, the member argued that the contract was with the county, not the town. The court held that a conflict of interest occurs when a town board member acquires premises located in the town in which he serves at a county tax sale. Because in the statewide taxing system, it is the town that has the duty to collect and receive all state, county, and local taxes that may be levied on real property within its borders, and the county is charged with collecting delinquent taxes. The town tax collecting officer is a town employee. Thus, the petitioner in this case, through his membership on the town board in preparing the town budget and thus initiating the collection of taxes, must be considered as part of the approval and authorization culminating in the county tax sale. From the other vantage point, it is the town collecting officer who may seek to satisfy the tax by levying on the personal property of the taxpayer. The petitioner's official interest in this matter, when contrasted with his personal acquisition of the other person's property, can only be described as conflicted, stated the court. General exceptions to Section 801 of the General Municipal Law is that the payment of lawful compensation and necessary expensive of any municipal officer or employee in one or more positions of public employment once the holding of such positions is not prohibited. Lawful compensation for employment is an exception to having control over a contract that might otherwise be prohibited under Article 18. Although the town board member example does not focus on planning boards and zoning boards of appeals, it illustrates how Article 18 is interpreted by the courts and how it works. The penalties for having control over a contract that you have an interest in that is with your municipality is, as stated on the slide, "Any contract willfully entered into by or with a municipality in which there is an interest prohibited under Article 18 of the General Municipal Law shall be null, void, or wholly unenforceable." In addition, any municipal officer or employee who willfully and knowingly violates the foregoing provisions of Article 18 shall be guilty of a misdemeanor. Now we will move into other provisions of Article 18 that have not been interpreted to exclude common applications before planning boards and zoning boards of appeals. Accordingly, Section 805A is applicable to all municipal officers and employees. It's entitled "Other Prohibited Acts." Gifts: Solicitation or receipt of any gift, either directly or indirectly, under circumstances in which it could reasonably be inferred that the gift was intended to influence the solicitor or receiver, or the gift could reasonably be expected to influence the solicitor or receiver in the performance of his or her official duties, or was intended as a reward for official action. The value of the gift that's prohibited under Section 805A is $75 or more. However, solicitation, notwithstanding the value, solicitation of any type is prohibited under Section 805A. The forms that a gift might take is money, service, loan, travel, entertainment, hospitality, anything or promise, in any other form. This is a very broad definition of what a gift might be. Note: An individual who has solicited or received a gift in violation of this provision is unable to cure the violation through recusal. Penalties will follow from such violation. Disclosure of confidential information. You may not disclose any confidential information acquired during the course of performing official duties or use such confidential information to further personal interests. For example, the New York State comptroller has opined that a real estate attorney who serves on a planning board and who is also actively buying real estate and selling homes may find it difficult to maintain an impartial and objective posture in matters in which he may have a personal interest. In such situations, that attorney should refrain from board discussions and board votes on matters in which he may have a personal interest. Other compensation for services that is prohibited under Section 805A, Subsection 1, Paragraph C. You may not receive or enter into any agreement, express or implied, for compensation for services to be rendered in relation to any matter before any municipal agency of which you are an officer, a member, or an employee, or you have jurisdiction over that municipal agency, or you have the power to appoint any member, officer, or employee of that municipal agency. Article 18, Section 802, exceptions do not apply here. Recusal is not a remedy for violating this provision, and disciplinary actions may follow from such violation. For example, a town planning board member was moved from office after it was determined that he had participated in consideration of a subdivision project at a time when he or his corporation had a contract with the subdivision. In this situation, the town planning board member was receiving compensation in relation to an application that he had control over, an application of which was before his municipal agency. Compensation for services under Section 805A, Subsection 1, Paragraph D. You may not receive or enter into any agreement, express or implied, for compensation for services to be rendered in relation to any matter before any agency of your municipality whereby your compensation is to be dependent or contingent on action by your agency with respect to the matter. This does not prohibit the fixing of fees based upon the reasonable value of services rendered, and this rule applies whether or not you are a member, officer, or employee of that agency. So if you are a member of a planning board, but you're appearing before the town board in relation to an application where you receive compensations for services on a contingent basis, that will be prohibited under Section 805A. However, if the fees were based upon a reasonable value of services rendered, such appearance will not be prohibited under this section of Article 18. Note that a violation of this provision, disciplinary actions may result from such a violation, and recusal is not a remedy. Some examples of Section 805A prohibited act include: A licensed architect who sits on a zoning board should not represent an applicant before the local building department. The chair of a planning board who is employed by a real estate company should not participate in the consideration of a subdivision application. A town board member who is also a geologist in the private sector may not be compensated or enter into an agreement to be compensated for soil borings on a project before the planning board. These are examples of prohibited actions involving planning boards. These are examples of prohibited actions involving planning boards and zoning boards of appeals. So while common applications before planning boards and zoning boards of appeals are not prohibited under Article 18, certain actions in relation to those applications and just being a member of these boards would be otherwise prohibited under Section 805A of Article 18. In addition, certain disclosure provisions of Article 18 would be applicable. Disclosure of interests generally. When a municipal officer or employee, or his or her spouse, has an interest in any actual or proposed contract with the municipality of which he or she is an officer or employee, he or she shall publicly disclose such interest in writing to his or her immediate supervisor and to the governing board as soon as he or she has knowledge of such actual or prospective interest. A violation of this section is a misdemeanor under Section 805 of the General Municipal Law. Just to recap, Section 805 of the General Municipal Law makes a willing and knowing violation a misdemeanor. Note the information in parentheses were changes made by the 2005 Laws of the State of New York, Chapter 499. Disclosure Exceptions under General Municipal Law, Section 802. These exceptions are just a few that I selected from the list in the state statutes. And state statutes should be referred to if you would like to determine whether or not your particular activity is excluded under Article 18 of the General Municipal Law. There are two separate sorts of activities that are accepted under Section 805. Some of the activities that are excluded, no disclosure is required. Other activities that are excluded, disclosure is required. We'll look at examples from the first set of exceptions where disclosure is required. The first example is the designation of a newspaper for publication of notice. If your reviewing board is responsible for designating a newspaper for publication of notices, disclosure is required if the individual who owns that newspaper has to appear before your board. The acquisition of real property or an interest therein through condemnation proceedings according to law. A contract with a membership corporation or other voluntary not-for-profit corporation or association. Disclosure is required if any individual from this corporation is appearing before your board. Contracts entered into prior to becoming an officer or employee. If you entered into a contract and that individual or entity representative is appearing before your board, such contract will be accepted from Article 18. However, disclosure would be required if such individual is appearing before your board. No disclosure is required when a contract for payment of reasonable rental of a room or rooms owned or leased by an officer or employee for official duties. If an individual that appears before your board rents a room from you, no disclosure is required. A contract for less than $750 per fiscal year cumulative. This means if an individual who appears before your board has a contract with your municipality in which is valued less than $750, while that contract might have otherwise been prohibited under Article 18, it is accepted under Section 802 of Article 18. And in addition to that, no disclosure of this contract is required. Article 18 of the General Municipal Law has specific disclosure requirements for planning and zoning matters. Applicants making petitions or requests for variances, amendments, changes of zoning, plat approvals, plat exemptions, or official map exemptions, licenses, or permits relating to a municipality's planning and zoning regulations must disclose known certain interests. The information the applicant must disclose or state is the name, residence, and the nature and extent of the interest of any state officer or any officer or employee of such municipality. The existence of certain familiar relationships give rise to an interest that may require disclosure in planning and zoning matters. So an officer or employee has an interest in the application when he, his spouse, or their brothers, sisters, parents, children, grandchildren, or the spouse of any of them is either the applicant or an officer, director, partner, or employee of the applicant, or legally or beneficially owns or controls stock of a corporate applicant, or is a member of a partnership applicant, of a member of an association applicant, or is a party to an agreement with such an applicant, express or implied, whereby he may receive any payment or benefit whether or not for services rendered, dependent or contingent upon the favorable approval of such applicant petition or request. In Nassau County, exception shall also apply to a party officer. Knowing and intentional violations of this section is a misdemeanor, which is a criminal remedy. Earlier in this presentation, I outlined the purposes as set forth for the adoption of Article 18 of the General Municipal Law by the state legislature in 1964. One of those purposes was to mandate that each community adopt an appropriate code of ethics to supplement Article 18. Each county, city, town, village, school district, and fire district must adopt a code of ethics. It may not be less restrictive than the provisions of Article 18, but can be stricter. The only requirement is that if each municipality adopts a code of ethics that is stricter than Article 18, it must be consistent with provisions in your local codes. It cannot conflict with provisions in your local codes. Please note that there is no longer a requirement to file a copy of an adopted code of ethics with either the New York State Comptroller or the former Temporary State Commission on Local Government Ethics. Unlike local codes of ethics, which must be adopted to supplement Article 18, local boards of ethics are optional boards that may be created at the pleasure of a governing board of a municipality. What are boards of ethics? Boards of ethics renders advisory opinions to officers and employees of the municipality. They may not issue advisory opinions at the request of officials or citizens. Boards of ethics receives and investigates complaints filed by citizens, however. They consist of at least three members. The majority of members, however, must not otherwise be officers or employees of the municipality. This requirement is to increase the independence of local boards of ethics. At least one member under Article 18 must be an elected or appointed officer or employee. The local board of ethics under Article 18 serves at the pleasure of the appointing body. However, remember that Article 18 provides that local law may supplement its requirements. Thus, requirements regarding local boards of ethics may be changed by local law. In an effort to increase the independence of your local board of ethics, it might be a good idea to provide that no elected or appointed officer or employee be a part of your local board of ethics. And that even if your board serves at the pleasure of the appointing body, a public hearing should be held in order to abolish such board. This can further increase the independence of the local board, consistent with the requirement that a majority of members must not otherwise be officers or employees of the municipality. Local boards of ethics must review and administer the financial disclosure law of the municipality. They may receive filings and financial statements annually. Again, local boards of ethics are optional. This is unlike local codes of ethics, which is a mandatory requirement under Article 18. Now we will begin to discuss conflicts of interest and the common law. Prior to the passage of Article 18 of the General Municipal Law, situations given rise to conflicts of interest and ethical conflicts in general were governed by the common law. Simply stated, the common law is any rule of state law created by a court. State statutes may alter the common law. The state statute we have been discussing is Article 18 of the General Municipal Law, which has altered or changed the common law rules of conflicts of interest and ethical conflicts. But not all of these rules have changed. We will now discuss those common law rules that remain valid in spite of Article 18 of the General Municipal Law. Familial conflicts. Nepotism will be the first rule of the common law that we will discuss today, followed by appearance of impropriety with a focus on prejudgment of an application and ex parte conversations. A little on ex parte conversations. We will then move on to develop an understanding of incompatibility of public offices. When one person holds more than one public office, we will conclude with conflicts of interest and other considerations. It is important for everyone to note that state law does not prohibit persons from serving in the same governmental unit because they are related by consanguinity, by blood, or by marriage. The rationale was expressed in a fall 2005 publication of The Municipal Lawyer. And that rationale is that oftentimes, a commitment to public service runs in the family. Merely allowing family members to work for the same municipality presents little harm. The harm arises from an abuse of office when perhaps a public official hires, retains, or promotes a family member, or supervises a family member, or is supervised by that family member. That nepotism is not prohibited under state law is reinforced by certain sections of Article 18. Remember, employment contracts between a municipality and certain family members of an officer or employee of that municipality is excluded from Section 803 of Article 18's definition of interest. If an employment contract is between the municipality and either a spouse, a minor child, or dependent, that employment contract is not prohibited under Article 18. So no matter what you might feel about that contract, there is no conflict of interest in such a situation under the law. The common law rules that remain in spite of the fact that Article 18 of the General Municipal Law does not prohibit certain forms of nepotism is expressed in this slide. Public officers still have the responsibility to exercise their official duties solely in the public interest. Appearance of impropriety may control whether a family member ought to be disqualified from a specific deliberation. For example, a 1996 Attorney General opinion concluded that a member of a town board should refrain from participating in any official action that would affect the terms and conditions of his or her spouse's employment. Other state statutes may be violated in cases involving preference based on family relationships. People v. Haywood, for example. In this case, Penal Law Section 195.00 Subsection 1 was violated. The court concluded that the defendant's actions violated the town's code of ethics where the defendant, who was a water utilities superintendent, permitted his son to use a hydraulic pellet cart owned by the town at the son's place of business for three and one-half years. These facts represented an abuse of the office of superintendent for the benefit of a family member. Consider this example from a 1999 Supreme Court case, dealing also with familial relationships and the conflicts that may arise. Two development applications to subdivide property and construct senior housing and senior facilities were received by a town planning board. One of the applications was submitted by a well-liked local developer. That well-liked developer hired an attorney to represent him on the subdivision application. The attorney was the spouse of one of the members of the town board. During the course of the application's review, some changes were made to the zoning code, and the attorney's spouse made the motion to adopt those zoning changes. It so happened that the zoning changes favored the proposal submitted by the well-liked developer rather than the other developer. The well-liked developer's application was approved, and the other application was denied. The developer whose application was denied filed an Article 78 proceeding. The court in that case found that a planning board is not necessarily infected with an alleged conflict of interest based upon a claim that a competitor applicant was locally favored because the competitor was represented by the spouse of a council member, even where the council member made the motion to adopt zoning changes that were favorable to the competitor. Local codes of ethics become important when dealing with nepotism as well. For example, absent a prohibition in a local code of ethics, it has been suggested that it is not a conflict of interest for a person to be appointed to the planning board of a town where his or her parent currently serves as a member of the town's zoning board of appeals. But as a general rule, family members should recuse themselves from participating in matters affecting compensation and employment. We have mentioned appearance of impropriety in other slides on nepotism. Appearance of impropriety may come in many forms. In other slides, it mainly rules where you might seem to favor one person over another because of familial relationships. Here we will discuss appearance of impropriety prejudgment. What is prejudgment? Prejudgment is acting in outward opposition or support of a project currently before a reviewing board. It suggests that the member It suggests that the member is biased, which is being unable to act impartially and keep an open mind. Or that member might be exercising favoritism, special consideration to one point of view over another. This is distinguished from philosophical approach or personal opinions based on education and experience. For example, a board member may have opinions concerning the need for parkland or for affordable housing in general, and not in, which is not in connection with a specific application. It is likely not prejudgment to write on these matters once writing on these matters is not directly in relation to an application that's currently before your board. You should also note, however, that to determine whether there has been prejudgment, it is a question based on all of the circumstances. And the ultimate judgment must be made by the board member who best knows his or her own state of mind and by local officials charged with enforcement of the municipality's code of ethics. The next common law rule that we will discuss is ex parte communication. What is ex parte communication? It is that communication with the reviewing board outside the presence of all sides to a matter. The state legislature has provided a mechanism by which ex parte communications are permitted. That mechanism is the State Administrative Procedure Act. No case has held that planning boards and zoning board of appeals are subject to the strict application of the State Administrative Procedure Act, however. Ex parte communication nonetheless is dangerous when the information is excluded from the record. So as a rule of thumb, if ex parte communication has taken place, immediately place on the record the substance of what has been discussed and be accessible to any interested side to a matter. Another type of conflict that might arise with members of planning boards and zoning boards of appeals is in the context of the number of offices or positions that a member may hold. We will now discuss compatibility in office when statutes say that those positions are incompatible or when the common laws say that those positions are incompatible. Just as a recap, the common law is any rule of state law created by a court. The doctrine of compatibility of offices is triggered when one person holds more than one public position. The general rule. In the absence of constitutional or statutory provisions which prohibit dual office holding, one person may hold two offices simultaneously unless they are incompatible. Main statutory incompatibility for planning boards and zoning boards are listed here. The position of planning board member and the position of a zoning board of appeals member is incompatible with membership on a town, village, or city governing board. If a planning board has been established or if a zoning board has been established in a town, village, or city, a member appointed to either board may not also serve on their municipality's governing board. Membership on a town board renders you ineligible for membership on a town's planning board. Membership on a village board of trustees renders you ineligible for membership on a village planning board. Membership on a city legislative body renders you ineligible for membership on a city's planning board. A member of a town board is ineligible for membership on a town's zoning board of appeals. A member of a village board of trustees is ineligible for membership on a village's zoning board of appeals. And member, a member of a city legislative body is ineligible for membership on a city's zoning board of appeals. Other statutory incompatibilities are listed on this slide for your reference. County law Section four-one-one prohibits a county judge, a family court judge, a surrogates court judge, district attorney, sheriff, county clerk, or any other elective county officer from holding at the same time any other elective county or town office or the position of city supervisor. Village law Section three dash three hundred subsection three also prohibits the holding of an elective and an appointed zil- village office. You can't be mayor and still be a member of the planning board. Town law Section twenty subsection four prohibits holding more than one elective town office. General city law Section three prohibits any member of the common council of the city from holding certain other paid city offices. An article on this topic that might be helpful is non-Article eighteen conflicts of interest restrictions governing counties, cities, towns, and villages under New York state law by Mark Davies. That article may be accessed at the link on the slide. There is no statutory incompatibility in certain county planning boards and regional planning board positions. County planning boards. General municipal law Section two thirty-nine C subsection two subdivision C says that no person shall be precluded from serving as a member of a county planning board because such member is an elected or appointed official of the county or a municipality. Regional planning boards. General municipal law Section two thirty-nine dash H three C says that no person shall be precluded from serving as a member of a regional planning council because such member is an elected or appointed official of such municipality. A member of either a county planning board or a regional planning board shall excuse himself or herself from any deliberation or vote relating to a matter or proposal before such board which is or has been the subject of a proposal, application, or vote before the municipal board of which he or she is a member. So if your county planning board or regional planning board has a matter that relates directly to the municipality that you live in, you should excuse yourself from discussions of that application. Common law incompatibility. When two offices or positions are squarely at odds with one another, those two offices are said to be incompatible. The crucial question is whether the two positions are compatible either because one is subordinate to the other or because the functions of the two positions are inconsistent. An Attorney General opinion has found that where an individual who initially was hired to serve as a secretary to the zoning board of appeals was subsequently appointed by the town board to be a member of that zoning board of appeals, it was improper for that member to serve in both positions simultaneously. Conflicts of interest, other considerations. Decisions of boards made in violation of the common law may be set aside. This is so even if there's been no specific violation of Article eighteen of the general municipal law. Zagorius and Tuxedo are two cases which exemplify this notion. In Zagorius, members of a zoning board were employed by the applicant for an area variance. Those members decided the area variance application in favor of their employer. Although no specific provision of Article eighteen was violated, the court found that perceived conflicts of interest under the common law existed and in court, and accordingly, the votes of the zoning board of appeal members were rightly set aside. In Tuxedo, an officer of an advertising firm could not vote on a zoning application submitted by a subsidiary of one of his firm's clients despite the absence of any interest specifically forbidden by the provisions of Article eighteen. The court stated that the probability of the member's firm getting an advertising contract as a result of the board member's favorable vote on a two million dollar site plan proposal was real. This is the point of the presentation that we talk about. What would be the results of interested contracts? Results of contracts entered into in violation of Article eighteen of the general municipal law or contracts entered into in violation of the common law rules of ethics. If you entered into a contract that was in violation of Section eight oh one of the general municipal law, Article eighteen, that means that you had control over an interested contract, and you actually entered into an interested transaction. That contract would be void under Section eight oh four. And under Section eight oh five, knowing and willful violations would be a crime, a misdemeanor. Violations of Section eight oh five dash A. That section deals with gifts and solicitation of any kind. Section eight oh five dash A two says that knowing and intentional violations may result in fines, suspension, or removal from office or employment. Common law violations. Recusal might be mandated by a court, or the contracts might be void. To avoid these results, governing boards should be encouraged to provide for alternate board members so that they may serve in cases of conflicts of interest. Now that we have discussed the nature of conflicts of interest under Article eighteen of the general municipal law and the common law, you have the tools to make any changes that might be necessary to further the provisions and intent of the statute and the common law. Now, you might be better equipped to identify when situations and certain practices within your municipality might be in violation of Article eighteen and/or the common law. To aid in this process, the Government Law Center of Albany Law School has designed a municipal checklist. It highlights and reinforces the rules we have learned today through use of a series of questions that you might ask yourself or that you might ask your municipal officers. The answers to these questions should give you an indication of what you need to do to get your ethics laws in compliance with Article eighteen and the common law. The municipal checklist. Have you reviewed a copy of the state ethics law, Article eighteen, in the last year? Have you reviewed a copy of the, of your local code of ethics in the last year? If you haven't, you should secure a copy of these codes and review them. Does your business relate in any way to issues which may come before the board on which you sit? Could your business potentially benefit or be harmed by a decision of the board on which you serve? What are your recusal procedures? This might be a consideration to answer those questions. Are you or a member of your immediate family licensed or engaged in any of the following professions which may cause you, your firm, or family member to appear before the board on which you serve? Are you an architect, attorney, builder, developer, engineer, land surveyor, mortgage broker or agent, realtor, subcontractor for work, or new construction or remodeling, title insurance company? If so, there might be a conflict of interest. Do you hold investments in real estate within a municipality on whose board you serve? Do you have stock of any other type of ownership interest, including a silent limited partnership in any company or organization which may appear before the board on which you serve? If so, there might be a conflict. Are you related to or in business or professional relationship with another municipal official on a different board or in an office where either position may review the decisions of the other? If so, there might be a conflict. Are you comfortable and conversant with the municipal board policies on conflicts of interest, recusals from deliberations, and recusal from voting? Do you know where to go to get answers to ethical questions in a timely fashion? The bottom line of this presentation, including the municipal checklist, is that you know the law so that you can be in compliance with the law and thereby avoid the headlines. Again, the goal of this presentation was to explore standards of ethical conduct for members of planning boards and zoning boards of appeals through a look at Article eighteen of the general municipal law and the common law. I hope we have achieved this goal, and by so doing, you have gained a better understanding of your ethical obligations as a municipal officer. This presentation was done in collaboration with Patricia E. Salking of the Government Law Center of Albany Law School and Mark Davies of the New York City Conflicts of Interest Board. Questions relating to this presentation may be directed to the Department of State. Information on how to contact the Department of State is located on the next slide of this presentation. My name is Natasha Phillip, and I thank you for allowing me to provide you training on municipal ethics.